Good evening. It is Wednesday, May 21st. We're here for our regularly scheduled night meeting for the county commissioners. All three commissioners are present. We have our administrator, Mr. Danzel, and our clerk of the board. So at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please join and make pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I thank you all for attending the night meeting. We have these night meetings so that the public that are working during the day can be here to view their concerns, if they have any. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the current agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with one exception. Item number six under regular business would move that we move that into consent.
And I believe there's been a motion, a second, to move regular business item six, request for consensus invitation to the tribes for participation in the update process of the 2026 comprehensive plan, which we're all in consensus with. So we're going to move that to consent. And did we want to add another item to the agenda?
I think it's possible, Mr. Chairman, but not at this time, I don't believe.
Okay, okay. So there's been a motion, a second, to move regular business item number six to consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we'll move down to public comment. Anybody in the room for public comment? Or anybody? We don't have anybody man on the phones, do we?
Thank you, commissioners. Three weeks ago, a gentleman named Ryan Jacobs came from Mirror Ministry and spoke about an issue with the surrounding farmers now unable to farm, as the state sees it as a school with its 30 occupants. As you recall, on January 18th, 2022, the then commissioners voted to approve the Mirror Ministry house for young women escaping abuse in gangs out in the middle of commercial farms, despite the consternation and concern of the farm owners for the very reason Mr. Jacobs brought to you. I do want to point out that Commissioner Didiar did vote against that. Anyone can go and review the meeting on YouTube, January 18, 2022. And I was there as well, and I spoke about this concern at the 48-minute, 43-second timestamp. At that time, the wax were pushing actually for a 10-day notice before spraying near schools and nurseries. However, in the case of our country schools, such as Edwin Markham, the farmers spray on the weekends and summers when school is not in session. Depending on what the chemical instructions, it can be up to 1,200 feet or half a mile away from occupied structures. In either case, it makes growing crops like potatoes impossible. This is the very reason why we have zoning laws in the first place. According to the meeting and the presentation of the conditional use permit, 2021-13, on January 18th, 2022, the planning commissioner presented on the overhead screen, of which I took screenshots, that they would start out at six beds and increase to no more than 18. We were assured by Commissioner Mullen at the time that this house cannot interfere with farming in any way, and we were also told by him that if they went outside of the cup, their permit would be revoked. Now I hear they have 30 beds, and the state sees it as an occupied building with no weekends or summers off. You see, Mirror Ministry is actually worse than a school for the very fact that there are always young girls at the Mirror House. There are no weekends or summer vacations. Then you take into account that in five and 10 years, one of those young women could develop cancer, and they can then come back and sue the farmers, the chemical company, the broker, the applicator, and the crop contractor, thus making it impossible to grow any kind of crop, as none of them will take the risk. It's not worth it. It doesn't matter if it's legal. Companies are sued all the time for products that the FDA approves, so it doesn't matter if you say that we'll be able to farm. It only matters what is. One thing that struck me as I reviewed the video presentation was that it talked about the number of people who wrote letters in support of Mirror Ministries was more than those against it. I am doing a records request for all of this because I have a feeling that none of the letters were from the area farmers, whose are the only opinions that matter when it comes to conditional use permit. Those who are part of the sponsoring church or those who do not live, their voices are meaningless. In any case, let me wrap up. I do hope that what I'm asking is what Mr. Jacobs asked, and that is what our commissioners going to do about it. I hope that you investigate, and I will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Gentlemen, Matt Beaton, Franklin County Auditor. Wish I had more than three minutes, but I'll make it fast. We all know after, after more than a year, I am thankful that the truth is finally finding light. And that's a good thing, because the people deserve it. I mentioned last month, when the state auditor's report came back, that that was the first step. This judgment, right here in my, holding my hand, and that the public can find on the Franklin County Auditor's website, under my picture, under the blog, it's the second. There'll be more. The secret recording made by Mike Kronmeyer, who also goes by Gonzales, was a violation of the Washington Privacy Act. Based on that crime, a sheriff with 40 years of law enforcement experience and a four-term prosecutor that has twice run for judge worked together to launch a community-shaking criminal investigation. I say that because the press referenced it over, in over 20 articles. The duo persuaded Supreme Court, or excuse me, Superior Court judges to issue search warrants, and imagine this, they sealed the case to be released during the 2024 election filing week, and it was then leaked to the media. They involved a Snoqualmie County criminal, Chief Criminal Deputy, the Benton County Sheriff's Office, and the case turned into a smear campaign against me that continues to this day, myself and, and Mr. Mullen. As I said in May of last year, there are good actors and bad actors in Franklin County government. Of that you can be assured. The false allegations are fueled by ego and an abuse of power, and when the truth and facts are exposed through the pending lawsuit or those to be filed, the public will have the opportunity to decide for themselves, and they can see this for what it is. Well, between that state auditor's report that showed, you know, let me just continue. The Franklin County Auditor's Office, day in and day out, just does our job. The April state auditor report showed that the invoice at the Happo Center was not valid. Mike Kronmeyer wanted to pay a vendor that was no longer under contract for services that the vendor did not provide, all while the vendor had not yet explained all of the finances at the Happo Center. Mr. Kronmeyer knew that from the beginning. If the PA had taken the information or given me the proper opportunity that I deserved in an executive session to try to explain what was really going on and what was misunderstood, the community wouldn't have had to been put through what it was. This order is one more step, and the, the people and the media were led on a year-long charade based on a violation of the Privacy Act and what turned out to be a less-than-stellar investigation by the Sheriff's Office. The worst part is, that same, that one of those same officials recommended that the public pay out $130,000 settlement. That violation was a gross misdemeanor. My request is that that very same official consider charging Mr. Kronmeyer for the crime he committed, and most certainly recover that money. Thank you, guys. Sorry I went over.
Thank you. It was worth hearing.
Good evening, commissioners. Last meeting, I was requesting for more documentation in the packets, and I want to retract that. I was informed by our lovely clerk here that it was not quite accurate, so I think I'm going to do the right thing and publicly say I apologize for that. And given what we've already heard today, every action we take affects our community, whether it's Mirror Ministries or the farmers. It's a hard job that you have trying to resolve those things, but I want to encourage you to keep finding the third right solution. It may not make everything perfect, but we've gotten into a battleground for quite a long time, and it has taken a toll on the people under this dome. I'm not going to point fingers. I, I'm not going to take sides. It's just, it truly, truly breaks my heart. And I think I speak for a majority of people in this county. Having a strong hand and a decisive hand can be balanced truly with a softer touch, and I encourage you towards that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Janee Merrill, and I live in Eltopia. And I just wanted to talk about paving roads out in the country. I know this is something that has been brought up in the past, a long time ago, but it's been a long time since we've seen changes like this happen in, out in the country where I live. And I have tried to educate myself on the subject, and I've called Olympia, Steve Johnson's. I tried contacting him because of the Rural Arterial Program, which in my research has, is supposed to help with these issues of county roads. And, and he sent me to my county engineer, Craig Erdman, and I contacted him, and I did get ahold of him, and I did talk to him, and he just said that the funds are not there. And, and when I talked to Steve Johnson's office, they said that the application process, they're just the ones that approve it. They're not the ones that make it, which is why I need to contact our county engineer. So I contacted him. And I just, like, he made it seem like it was out of his hands, but, so I'm just kind of curious whose hands it's in. Like, who is making these proposals? And how do I get something like my county road to be on the proposal to be paved, or the county roads around me? Because he said that we do have this program right now, this bond or, I guess I can't remember what it is classified as, but, but it is to maintain roads like Taylor Flats and Ringgold, which I guess maybe because I live on a dirt road, I think those are perfectly fine. The one I live on, a lot less so. So when I contact, when I talked to Craig Erdman, he's, I told him I was going to come tonight, and he said, you can do that, but the county does not have the funds to do it. Who you need to talk to are your state representatives. And so we've sent letters to them, too. I guess I'm just trying to cover my bases and make the issue known. And with these other issues that have been presented, I know that this is maybe a small one, and I also know that this is not something that needs, that can happen right now. But just bringing it forward and letting you know that there are people in our community that, that want to see some of our tax-paying dollars come out of the city and into the country again. I would love to see that happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we can address that later in our commissioner updates. Anybody else for public comment? I think nobody coming forward. Look for the consent agenda, which has six items on it currently.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of consent agenda items one through six as presented.
Second?
There's been a motion, a second, for the six items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Moves us down to regular business item, Budget Strategy and Mitigation, 2025-26 Budget Shortfalls, presented by Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I've got a PowerPoint presentation for you all. This is the same document that has been dispersed throughout the county to department heads, elected officials. As you gentlemen know, we have had two consecutive months of 15% under our projections for sales tax revenue. And if the trend continues, we want to be in a point where we are able to be proactive rather than reactive. One of the tenets of this strategy, you actually took under consideration and acted on last week with the hiring freeze. But with this, I'll just go through this and kind of explain what we're thinking as far as timeline goes, and kind of what kind of effort is going to be needed for this to be able to be successful. Bear with me. Franklin County faces significant budget shortfalls of 1.2 million and a million next year. And of course, we already talked about it, it's the tax revenues. This report is going to prioritize higher-impact strategies that'll have the, the ability to help us the most with the littlest amount of effect on the people that work here. We'll go over some of these things that we got to consider when we do that, potential strategies and recommendations. So I'm going to go through these, and at the end of this, oh, it's not showing up, is it? It's paused here. We're having technical difficulties, gentlemen. Let me see here, just one moment. There we go. Thank you, sir. Perfect. Thank you, Julio. I'm sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen. As we discussed, there's 1.2 million shortfall for '25, and a one point, or about $1 million in '26. To address these budget shortfalls, we recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider the following strategies. We want to do a thorough expenditure review. This would include getting some county experts out of the auditor's office and the accounting department, Mr. McCart, Mr. Erdman, and the Board of Commissioners to conduct and look at all the different expenditures we have that are ongoing. This should include evaluating nonessential expenditures and exploring opportunities for consolidation or streamlining, revenue enhancement opportunities. That's not just tax increases, but it's, a lot of times, it could be grants, it could be partnering to provide services in a more efficient way. But we'll talk about all of the above. This is an important one, a strategic prioritization of services. We got to evaluate the core functions of what county government should be doing, and if we're doing extra, do we need to be doing that? Phased implementation of capital projects, this is kind of pretty self-explanatory, but it's, I think, a good time to review and prioritize all of our planned building that we've got going on so that we can be in the best possible position to make the best determinations moving forward if we're cash-strapped. So if our cash flow becomes a problem, that's going to become important. We've talked about the hiring freeze and position review. A little bit later on tonight, I'll go over the process for, if you're trying to be exempted from the hiring freeze, but for the most part, that's the best mechanism that we can do to stop the bleeding now, and without any impact to people that currently work here. And I think it's wise that we did that, rather than get to a point where you might have to make a worse decision down the line if the revenue doesn't catch up. This one, I think, is up for you to, to take on, but it doesn't necessarily have to happen this next year. Two things, early budget planning and engagement. And then some counties and cities have gone to a biennium budget, but I've spoken with the majority of the folks that I know that have done that, and they've all gone back to a yearly budget. So it's something to consider, but I will say that it's usually easier for people to have a grasp on it on a yearly basis. That's why the legislature always has the second session, in the short session. It's really technically because they're supposed to be supplementing the budget from the first. Contingency planning, this is always a good idea, but it's incredibly important idea when it comes into a budget struggle situation like we are. I've asked HR, Margot, to get with all the department heads and elected officials, and to come up with a needs assessment. So this is going to be incredibly important, because I want to, I want to have folks let us know what they think their needs are for positions as we move forward, so that we're not getting a flood of requests all at once, and we can kind of make sense of whether the position's needed, whether it's not needed, or not, usually it's not not needed, but whether we can delay hiring or bringing people on. You will see here in the targeting hiring freeze page, you know, we're, right now, Franklin County staffing is at about two, not quite three full-time employees per thousand people that live here, which is pretty low comparatively speaking. So the idea that we could see a lot of savings by just cutting a bunch of positions probably isn't realistic. But this freeze will help with our cash flow, and it'll help with getting us in a position in conjunction with some of these other strategies that'll have us on a good, solid footing when it comes. And I wanted to put the risk down here, too, because I think it's important that everybody has a full, transparent picture. There is a potential for employee burnout when this happens, or disruption to some service, which can be mitigated with better communication and some exemptions, and we've talked about that. But those are things that I think should be considered before we just make any lasting impacts and decisions. I talked about this a little bit earlier, strategic capital project review, deferring noncritical projects. This could save us between $1 and $3 million for the, over the next two years. I think it makes sense that delaying the nonessential projects, and again, that would be for the board to determine what's essential and what's nonessential, in conjunction with a team of folks that we have that are going to be kind of working on this project, which leads right into my next point, which is to form a cross-departmental team that's led by our planning director to review these projects. And I put in there, within a three-week timeframe, I don't know if that's as important as making sure that we have it within two months, but sooner rather than later, we'd like to have an idea of where we stand. Here are risks involved, our long-term cost increases due to inflation or infrastructure deterioration. And so the idea is that we've got to prioritize projects with minimal long-term impact. Adopting financial policies, this is near and dear to my heart. In, in conducting this review, I found that Franklin County only has two actual financial policies compared to six to a half dozen, or to a dozen in most counties. And so I believe that we're past time to do that. It's true that these policies can help you pass not only audits, but it can enhance your bond rating, and it helps with long-term planning. So I think that it's important that we do that regardless if we were even in a budget shortfall. And so the implementation will be, again, we're going to probably rely heavily on the auditor's office, the accounting department, Mr. McCart, myself, to be able to come to some policies that'll make sense for the board and will help protect the budget. So right now, without getting too far out into the weeds, Franklin County has a budget that's a bottom-line budget. Another way of looking at it would be the fully funded or wide open. And what that means is, is that the, most, most places have what's called a budget and then a spending plan, for lack of a better term. Ours is combined into one, so once you pass that budget, whoever has budget authority over that department can spend to the last cent, and we don't have the ability to, to do much. I think that we need to change that. I think that we need to have the ability for when times get tough, that the Board of Commissioners can have the ability to say, well, wait a minute, we, we can't do that right now, and here's why. So I think that's important, as well as some other budget policies, that if we adopt them, and we do it in a prudent and in a smart way, it'll just minimize the chances of us losing in an audit or getting told that we don't have enough controls in place. So again, this would be a recommendation whether we, whether we were in a budget shortfall scenario or not. We've talked about this, trying to control our VIBA costs. This is going to be a, a kind of our, our wish and our hope, and what our desire would be is that over time, eventually, that we can get this down to where it makes common sense. Right now, I find that it'll be hard to get the entire way there, so long as there are bargaining units that are wishing for this. And so it's going to be hard to get there just immediately. But if we're able to kind of trim down on some of that, and then also some of the waivers, I believe that we can get to about $1 to $1.5 million annually in savings there. I already discussed the I already discussed the retention recruitment succession plans with Margot and HR. I'll be working with HR closely on that because I think that it's going to be incredibly important to note timing-wise when people are needing to bring people on or if they can push it off until later on in the year. And it goes back to what are we needing to provide here in a budget shortfall circumstance? And so I think it'll be incumbent upon the board and this team of folks that is going to be working on this to go out and really be thorough in your thought process. Financial management, I think that we could add quarterly budget reviews. You guys have kind of been doing this a little bit anyway, but I think the biggest thing there is continuity. I think we've just got to make ourselves do it, even when it's tough for the planning, it's hard, because those little meetings can sometimes be a real difference-maker when it comes to what path we're going to take when it comes to the budget. I talked about the biennial budgeting strategy. I am not the biggest fan of that, but it is a tool in your chest that you should have available to you, and I think that it's at least worthy of your, you know, consideration. Some of the risks and mitigation, we've talked about some of this, you know, a faltering economy, that's a little bit out of our hands. You all pass laws and ordinances and the rules and regulations that you think are fair and right for Franklin County. I would say you have a very low regulatory burden to cross in most cases. An economic downturn could happen for a lot of different reasons. So because of that, I think that's important to have this in place. The second one, that's incredibly important and there's just no other way around it. Sometimes cost-saving measures, most of the time, can impact employee morale. The only way that you can get out in front of it is being transparent, frankly, and also communicating in clear, easy-to-understand ways that everybody can understand, and actually from that you can get buy-in because it's kind of like when you go through something rough in a group of people, you're kind of bonded by that. But if you do it, if you handle it poorly, it could be max, mass exodus. So I think that's going to be incredibly important to keep that in mind. And then, of course, state mandates. You never know what the state of Washington is going to either through funded or unfunded mandates send our way and tell us that that's now an obligation and a responsibility, not an option. So when that happens, we're at the whim, just like anybody else would be. Here's my timeline. The hiring freeze, we've already done. Staffing needs assessment is going to be within three weeks. Capital project review team, three weeks. Financial policies, a month, I think we can shorten that. We're going to review our fees and our charges to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing there. That's going to take a couple of months. Same with franchise and impact fees. The VIBA negotiations are already sort of an ongoing consideration as the bargaining unit's bargain. The retention and succession study will be going on, this is all going to be happening at the same time, so this will be going on in conjunction with the staffing needs assessment. In two months' time, I'll be able to present financial policies. Truthfully, that'll probably be a month. I don't think it's going to take two months. Our quarterly budget reviews, I just put this on here, I think we need to start at least in quarter two of this year of taking that back up and that we can expect to do that on a quarterly basis as needed. We could go to monthly if we absolutely need it, if the budget gets too unpredictable or there's too many ups and downs. Two months to review contracts and ILAs, and I think that that's going to be the longest of the entire process because you're going through all of our various agreements, whether it be with the state of Washington, with the other, like with cities, counties, we have a lot of by-county entities that provide services. It's going to take a little bit of time, and I think it'll be the longest time to review those contracts and those inter-local agreements. And then, once we go through all of that, I think that's, and we have it at the bottom because it'll be done in a month's time, we'll have a better understanding of where we are, and at that time, we'll also have the next two months' worth of revenue reported. Now, there are different takes on this. We've had, we have folks from across the state that think that it was a, just a downturn and not a recession. I think that there are some signals that show that it's picking back up, but I'll tell you, what worried me was coming in, and the Tri-Cities is one of the biggest, most fast-growing economies in the United States of America, and to have consecutive months where we come in under revenue, that was an alarm bell that, to me, we needed to do something and be thinking of these things. I would consider each of these, and you could almost consider it, like each slide would be worthy of your time to kind of, you know, turn and where you want to be. But I don't think we can wait on some of this. So what I am asking for permission is that we're able to form those teams, implement this plan, and I know it's going to be a working scenario to where it's not perfected yet because we don't have all the information, but with your blessing today, I would like to be able to move forward with that so that we can be in a position that we're not operating off our back foot when it gets worse, or if it gets worse. So to conclude, we've already went over this, the anticipated budget shortfalls for '25 and '26 present some challenges for Franklin County. I think they could be significant if we don't act on them. Proactive and decisive action will be required to ensure the county's fiscal stability. And finally, I recommend the Board of Commissioners carefully consider this information and that we move forward with getting these people together and going through these things, and then I'm going to go back here one more time, and so that we can meet this timeline. Because the whole point of the timeline is to coincide with our preliminary budget dates. So if we are able to have a good understanding and a firm grasp of where we are with all of this, combined with the reporting data on sales tax revenue, in my opinion, we're going to be placed in the best possible position when we have our preliminary budget hearings. And with that, Mr. Chairman, with Commissioners, I would yield to any questions or if you have any comments or deliberation you'd like to, this would be the time.
Commissioners, comments?
So you're just looking for consensus today?
Yes.
Yeah, my consensus, I think we should move forward as quickly as possible.
I agree. We've already made the first step, and that's hiring freeze. I think the faster we get in front of this, the better we are. We're got level ground, keep our balance. We don't get on our back feet, like you said, because we know that the state has gone overboard with taxation. I know that there's farmers out there that are hurting pretty bad right now, the hay just all got rained on, there's no money in it anyway. I'm predicting that we're probably going to see a shortfall in our tax collection on property taxes, too. It's, it doesn't look good out there right now. We've got guys that can't even pull their orchard out because the banks are telling them it costs too much. There's nothing to be harvested, there's no, people are going to get hired. Yeah, it's not looking very good, and I'm very, very thankful that you've put this together and got us on a plan for being ready for this instead of just standing around waiting for it to happen. Thank you, Brian.
Well, I appreciate that. I do need to tell you that it was a lot of buy-in from a lot of different people, so I'd love to take all that credit, but the truth of the matter is, is that Ryan Brimcomb and the Accounting Office, Tim Anderson, Rosa, Matt Beaton, Teresa Alvarez, we've run this by Council Jeff Briggs, there's been a really, Wes McCart, Craig Erdman. I think there's been a lot of buy-in, and I'm proud of this team that's already taken on stuff that's not real easy to talk about. So thank you, and I appreciate that. I would tell you that it wasn't me as much as it was the people that make up the team.
I wholeheartedly agree that let's get it underway, and where we can help, please reach out, and thank you to everybody that's participating and look forward to this process, even though part of it will not be enjoyable. It's necessary, and to do it now is better than to try to do it later. So thank you.
So you have all of our consensus on this, full steam ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will notify all the lucky participants.
All right, that moves us down to continuation of the closed record hearing. So at this time, we'll reconvene the closed record hearing, and Mr. Danzel, would you give us a brief synopsis of what's going to transpire tonight and who's the participants?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So you have already heard testimony, you have already ended that. You are at the deliberation and decision phase, so the board is welcome to deliberate and discuss amongst yourselves and then take action, but as I understand it, Council Briggs, I would like to make sure, the way I understand it is, there's no more testimony and no more any information being presented.
That's correct. I think we have to reopen it.
Reopen or reconvene?
Reconvene, sure.
Yeah, I just reconvene.
Whatever the magic language is. And then make a decision. So, and in our code, so just to be clear in our code, we can either, sorry, we can either deny, approve, or modify. Or I guess there is the, we also have the ability to remand it back to the Planning Commission, but that would only be with the consent of the applicant. The applicant would actually have to waive the timelines under the Local Project Review Act, so that would have to be with the consent of the applicant. And Mr. Harpster is here tonight on behalf of the applicant.
All right, Commissioners, feel free to chime in whenever you want to.
So we continued this for one week, and there was, the staff was going to go back and talk to the applicant. Is there, nothing has come of that? It's as if we are continuing with, nothing changed from last week?
Right. I mean, if I, I mean, I think the applicant has made it clear that their wish would be that the board would approve this with an inadvertent discovery protocol, and looking at the record, there's, I think there's an adequate factual basis to support that if that's the way that the board wanted to go. It's certainly up to the board. I guess what I'm getting at is, the board has the right to make that decision if that's what the board wants to do. The board can also go and support the direction that the Planning Commission wanted to go, that route as well. So the board has discretion here.
So Jeff, with that, hypothetically,
Sure.
If we were to pass this, we could probably be challenged on it, which would ultimately set this back for this developer and the landowner for a longer time than we're at right now.
Hypothetically, it could be challenged, right?
Because I'm all for development. I'm all for creating this, but you know, when they stated here that does not involve any construction or soil disturbance in the shoreline ridges or shrub steep environment near the river, and all construction will be occurring on portions of property that was already farmed, and we already found the road going through a portion that wasn't farmed, and it's in the yellow, and then there's other yellow down below in these other areas. You know, I proposed last week that instead of stopping this, maybe we could propose that they can start construction on everything but that, but then get the artifact thing done for those areas so that we're in compliance. Is that something that's possible? We can alter?
I think anything's possible. Just to sort of recap the arguments here, I think, give a synopsis, I believe what the proponent is saying, what the developer is saying, is that under the inadvertent discovery proposal, that would protect any sort of cultural artifacts because any land that's being disturbed, you know, they're going to, under the inadvertently discovery protocol, they would discover those, right? Because they're going to search the areas where the land disturbance is going to occur. Also, most of this area's been farmed, so that's sort of the synopsis of the argument.
So they are going to get that artifact done on those areas? They're going to have that done?
That's my understanding, right? Wes, do you want to come up and? I think he could recap it, right?
I don't know. You're the lawyer.
Okay, so we're, okay, well, let's just deliberate then. And then, and then, so then the other, the other aspect of it is, what we were considering after that, right, was the potential to mitigate within this other region, right?
Right.
This 400-foot region, right, which is different, which hasn't been disturbed at all.
Exactly.
Right.
That's,
And they're saying we're not going to do any land disturbance activities there. So why would we need to do, why would we need to do any sort of survey there if we're not going to be disturbing in that area?
Well, the road goes through the one area.
That's their argument.
Yeah. Those areas weren't farmed because they're too steep and a gully. It's been farmed for 50 years, and when they rip those fields, they go down 18 inches. I think if they were going to find anything, they would have found it.
Well, judging from the contour lines, that it's a steep drop, so.
I grew up out there. I'm very familiar with the gullies, and they're steep.
So in our deliberation, the area that goes through that, that red area is, Mr. Chairman, as you pointed out, that would be a fill and not a, you wouldn't be disturbing the ground, you're filling over the top of it. So you're not, you're not digging into the ground, right? So that's the only area in question, I believe. And the other areas, they've indicated in their submittal that they will not be disturbing the area outside of that. So we have a fill across that area, which is non-ground disturbing, you're filling it. And then you have the area with elevation 450, and below is non-ground disturbing. And they've said in our packet, the findings of fact were that they are not going to be disturbing any of those other areas that are outside of the farmed areas. So is that what the findings that we have, and we establish that we are not going to be digging in the undisturbed areas?
If they're going to build a road over those gullies, you're going to have to fill them in. There'd be no digging.
That's my point, is you're not disturbing the ground, other than, you know, you're putting on top of it, you're filling on top of it, but to discover something, you would have to go into the ground, and that's, they've indicated that that is not happening.
I move that the mitigation measures be inadvertent discovery protocol and that it be placed, be in place during any construction.
Second with discussion.
There's been a motion and a second to move that the mitigation measure be an inadvertent discovery protocol and that it be placed during any construction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Discussion. This map, right here?
Yeah, that one.
Hand it down to him.
So this map that we're showing is, that is 100% fill where that private road is going across that, that red area in tract H. And so with the information in front of us, yeah, I'm good with that.
So my only question is, is if we get challenged, do you think we can defend our decision?
I believe so. I mean, those embankments out there are so steep, you can't hardly stand on them, let alone build or do anything with them. I mean, that's why they're going to have to fill that in order to make a road because those banks out there are so steep that they're not even, they're not solid.
Is there any further discussion? There's been a motion.
One moment.
Mr. McCart.
Excuse me. So Commissioners, there, there is one more piece that you need to add to that. You need to instruct the staff to create the ordinance based on your decision, so we're right, get it ready for signature to present to you.
We need one more motion.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that we instruct staff to prepare an ordinance to, that complies with the action that we just took.
Second.
Been a motion and a second to ask staff to compile. So I will not try to repeat all that, but just, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And at this time, I'll close the record hearing. Thank you for reminding me all this. All right. So now we'll go down to Commissioner/Administrator Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McCart, for doing that. I met with Eric Johnson, the former interim county administrator here, to discuss possibly contracting some of the economic development work that we've talked about as it pertains to not just Hapo, but also trying to negotiate this ILA with the city of Pasco, as well as, as I've shared with you, the public infrastructure idea where you could better utilize some of your .09 funding. It might actually come into play with our budget issues that we're having, where we're kind of becoming more self-reliant instead of assigning monies to go elsewhere. But met with him. The city of Pasco's been in contact, and I've forwarded this information to you gentlemen regarding extending that deadline for the ILA I just mentioned. I spoke with City Administrator Dave Zabel, and they will be voting to extend at their next board meeting on the 27th, which will work perfectly for us to extend on the 28th if you so choose. Those are ready to go, and I want to thank the staff over at the city of Pasco. Attended the Historical Preservation Committee's meeting and received requests for funding on various projects. The committee will bring their recommendations to this board once it's finalized. They did have to ask for supplemental information from some of the folks that presented, not because there was any ill intent, but just because there was information that was requested by some of the historical society and some of the members on that board. Spoke with Tri-Cities Monitoring and Chief Harmon regarding the guard shack and how to proceed. As it stands, tomorrow morning is when the transition takes place. Wanted to let you know about that. I want to thank all the employees who volunteered, decorated for the barbecue, serving, cleanup, and the rest. A big thank you to HR for all that you did, and to Jennifer Wagner, a really big, I gotta tell you, Jennifer Wagner does so much around here that it's all, you almost like miss that she does so much around here because she's everywhere, kind of. So I just want to thank HR and Jennifer and their staffs for really pulling off what I thought was a pretty dang neat celebration, so thank you all. We have another public records request that, from you gentlemen, that you will need to review, and it's much more, it's a lot more to it, so I will get with each of you individually, and we can go over that. It's filling out and looking for certain things and keywords, and a lot of it'll be done for you, but some of it you gotta search for yourself to provide any records that we might have created. With the Board's permission, I would like to add an agenda category titled Correspondence. And the reason that I'd like to do that is it's the right way to legally accept information that's supposed to go before the entire Board all at once. So I've got a couple pieces of correspondence that I'll go over afterwards here, and you'll see what I'm talking about, but it would be a very, like, maybe a two-minute thing, and you might not even get it every week. But when you get a letter from, say, the Attorney General, or you get notification from another entity, I think it would be fitting for us to be able to share what that is and hand it to you as a Board, and I think that's the intent of those letters. So was kind of looking for what you wanted to do on that, because it'll make perfect sense when I read the correspondence, but because we did the hiring freeze, we obviously have gotten letters requesting to be exempted from the hiring freeze, so I want to send that so you can all see them, but I would like to be able to do that officially and have a, just a little, maybe two-minute agenda item. Is that, is that acceptable to the Board?
And I think we should add that right before the Commissioner/Administrator Updates, so that.
Yeah. I think that makes perfect sense.
Is that, there's, is there a consensus for that?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Well, thank.
We'll add that to the agenda right before the Commissioner/Administrator Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, some correspondence that we got, you've got a letter from Chief Harmon requesting to hire some additional employees. They're six short. He wants to bring on four. He wants to work with us to try to make as much savings as we can, but also not allow jail staffing to be at risk. And then we have a request from John Rosenau, the county assessor. And what I envision being the case on these gentlemen is, of course, you can weigh in right now, and, and I would prefer that you do that by adding something to the agenda and then, you know, taking a vote and making a motion and all that. Or another, I think, reasonable way that you could do it is you're just getting the information right now. If you wanted to take a week and come back the next week and make your decision, that's acceptable as well. But those are two, and then, you know, Matt Beaton came up, but this was another piece of correspondence we received a couple, about three different times, actually, but Matt was right. Judge Brian Biggs in Spokane found summary judgment on all counts for the county auditor here. And so you're gonna need to know that as the Board of Commissioners, and I think that it is worth letting you folks know that.
Mr. Danzel?
Yeah.
Has the media picked up with this and wrote an article about that yet?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so, to be honest with you.
I haven't seen anything.
Sure, I'd like to hang him on the cross, but they ain't gonna give him any justification when he's been, what the heck?
Yeah, it's pretty, I mean, on everything, you know, so that's interesting. To the lady that spoke earlier tonight, I will get with you later, but there's what's called a six-year transportation improvement plan, and that's where we need to talk about putting, getting your road on. And then the Rural Arterial Program is a good program, but let's, I'll, I make a commitment to meet with you and discuss just exactly how you go about being informed about that. Does that sound good?
Perfect.
Perfect. And then finally, I omitted a name, Jeff Burkhart. He also helped put together a lot of the financial planning documents, and I went over a lot of the other people, and I hate it when I leave someone's name out, but that was, that was one of the real pillars there. And then, I, you've, you asked for this, and so I didn't know if we were gonna be doing it tonight, but it's available if you would like to. You asked me to put together a litigation communication plan for the county. I've done so, and a corresponding resolution, and so that's available for you, too, and you've already had a chance to look at that, I know. So that was my week. I also had a couple of meetings on the other side of the mountains. Those went well, and it's been a busy, it's been a busy couple of weeks here, but thank you, gentlemen. If there's anything else you'd like me to be working on, please let me know.
Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say I appreciate the hard work of our administrator. He's been doing a remarkable job. I got a text this morning before six, six o'clock, somebody reaching out and expressing their appreciation for his hard work, and they had already been corresponding with him before 6:00 a.m. this morning, and they were reaching out to me to say thank you. So thank you for your hard work. That's certainly appreciated, and it's, and it's not unnoticed. You and I have corresponded many times outside of normal business hours, and, and I appreciate that. So thank you. It has been a pretty busy last week. Wanted to say thank you to the assessor's office. They asked me if I would come to one of their meetings and swear in one of their new employees, and so thank you for that invitation, and, and that's kind of new territory for me, not really used to doing that type of thing, but that was, I really enjoyed that, so thank you and, and congratulations on the new staff there. Ploy appreciation barbecue, really enjoyed that, couldn't be here for very long, but thank you so much to facilities and HR that put all the time and effort into that, and everybody that contributed to help that go well and be paid for without use of county budget to do that. That was all paid for by, by the generous people that donated to that, so thank you to everybody there. Multiple meetings at the Hapo Center, and just always appreciate being able to work with Mike out there and, and the staff, so thank you, sir. WASAC Virtual Assembly, meeting with District Court. They had a couple of questions and potential requests for support in some of their grants that they've got and kind of ways to do that, so visiting with our administrator about how to do some of that and further conversation needed there. Had a request to meet with Franklin County Housing Authority, so met with them. That went well. Pre-agenda meeting with our administrator, had an opportunity to meet today with one of our counterparts in Benton County. Enjoyed that time and just update that he gave, and I believe he'll be reaching out to, to you two Commissioners as well. And also had a chance to meet with Eric Johnson about him being a potential contractor on our behalf in Franklin County, and he's, he already done a lot of good for this county and look forward to that potential. And I think that's my report, and, and Mr. Chairman, when y'all are done, I think that I would like to ask, ask something further.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullin.
All right. So Visit Tri-Cities will be hosting the Ironman competition again, and they are actively looking for volunteers, whether it be parking, handing out water. I mean, they, there's a lot of jobs that go to that, and they have put together a great staff that's promoting activities here in Tri-Cities that drives our economy. And also had the Board of Health meeting this morning, or this afternoon. We had the privilege of having Wes McCart come and speak to us about ADUs, accessory dwelling units, to try to fight the housing shortages that we're all facing, all counties in the state. And along with, you know, future development in rural areas is if you're, you know, gonna put a septic tank in with all the new changes that are coming with that, you know, it behooves you to plan for the future if you ever thought you were gonna put an accessory dwelling unit on your property to enlarge the, buy the larger tank so that it will support the sewer system for an ADU, so you're not having to tear it out and rebuild again later on. We also talked a little bit about the affordable housing problem that we have here in the You know, comparatively, one of the other Commissioners from Benton County stated that in Idaho, you know, you can build a house for $225 a square foot, in Washington State, that same house is about $350 a square foot. So when you talk about affordable housing, I just don't understand why anybody thinks that anybody's gonna build any affordable housing when it doesn't pencil out. Because nobody's gonna build a house that loses money. That's just saying, that's just the fact, and we keep raising these taxes and making all these requirements on our builders, you're, you're gonna force people to move out of the state, not build more affordable housing that, that does, that you're gonna lose money on. And that, that pretty much wraps up my report for tonight.
I got a question for you, Mr. Mullin.
Yes.
Yeah, did you get your entry fee in for that Ironman competition?
You know, I did with two legs of one a few years ago, and it's pretty tough to run after you've bicycled for 27 miles. Your legs just, they don't work the same anymore, I can guarantee you that. I did want to mention, too, you know, this is up in Stevens County, but we're having a horrible wolf problem. Our neighbor had an attack, it's been four days ago now, but they called Fish and Game to come out, and because they were so busy with the, all the wolf attacks in Ferry County that they said they didn't have time to come to Stevens County, and it would be a day before they could get out there. So they instructed the, the rancher to take his calf and, and secure it, so they could come take a look at it, to verify that it was a wolf attack. His shop was five miles away. The wolves went in that night and drug that calf out of the shop. Now, we don't know if it was the same wolves that attacked five miles away, but they broke, they got into the, the shop and drug that calf off. That's on Rocky Creek there in Stevens County. There was a lady that was up picking mushrooms on Rocky Creek and found herself being stalked out by wolves and was able to run to her rig and get out of there. In Republic last week, they shot a wolf in the chest as it was coming towards them. Luckily, the lady rancher had a rifle on her at the moment. So it is out of control, and it's just a matter of time before someone is not prepared and gets attacked. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullin. Last week, I had the Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Coalition Board Meeting, and then the Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Stakeholder Meeting, Ben Franklin Council Government Meeting, Board of Health earlier this afternoon. And it is an oxymoron to say you're creating affordable housing when it costs so much. Had phone calls from one farmer and comments from others about our taxation and the rates they're paying, and our commodities are in the hole, and times are getting tough out there. Got some letters here that I'd like to read that I received. Again, this is communications, and I just got these today, and it's from the county executives and chairs of the Board of the County Commissioners to us from the County Road Administration Board, and it is the Certificate of Good Practice, which I wish we had more paved roads. We do need to know the name of the road that that young lady lives on so that we can look at that, but I'll just tell you, my mom is 93, gonna be 94 in August, and she's still waiting for her road to be paved. There's the County Road Good Practice, and then we got a letter back from the Washington State Department of Transportation. Thank you for your letter regarding safety concerns on State Route 17 in Franklin County. Todd Tapper now serves as the Assistant Secretary of Transportation for Regions at our Washington State Department of Transportation Headquarters in Olympia. I am a regional administrator overseeing a portion of SR 17 in the South Central Region. And they go on to say that, yes, it's very concerning, and last year, they haven't got any accumulation, but last year, 547 crashes, 14 fatalities, and 310 injuries. They haven't got any, any crashes updates from this year. That was from previous. So it is a very big concern, and they are weighing it, so that letter was well done. Mr. Danzel's drafted that, and we sent it off. And then, that's about it. Paved roads, I put down there, but yeah, we're, we're looking at, we'd like to be paving more roads out there, but the cost per mile is so extraordinary, and when I was first elected Commissioner, and I went over to WASAC, they said your two main priorities are law enforcement and roads. That's what the County Commissioners are supposed to be focused on. That concludes my report. So at this time, I'll ask if, public comment, anybody want to come up for public comment? regarding safety concerns on State Route 17 in Franklin County. Todd Tapper now serves as the Assistant Secretary of Transportation for Regions at our Washington State Department of Transportation Headquarters in Olympia. I am a regional administrator overseeing a portion of SR 17 in the South Central Region. And they go on to say that, yes, it's very concerning. And last year, they haven't got any accumulation, but last year, 547 crashes, 14 fatalities, and 310 injuries. They haven't got any crashes updates from this year. That was from previous. So, it is a very big concern and they are weighing it. So, that letter was well done. Mr. Danzil's drafted that and we sent it off. And then, that's about it. Paved roads, I put down there. But yeah, we're looking at, we'd like to be paving more roads out there, but the cost per mile is so extraordinary. And when I was first elected commissioner and I went over to WASAC, they said your two main priorities are law enforcement and roads. That's what the county commissioners are supposed to be focused on. That concludes my report. So, at this time, I'll ask if public comment, anybody want to come up for public comment?
I would like to thank our county commissioners for signing the letter that supported the Title IX issue that the Kennewick School District raised and supporting girls and their sports and having locker rooms that have only biological girls in them. So, thank you for that. I think it's time to go visit our school board and see where they stand. I have visited with two school board directors there or former. I'm happy to report that we don't have that issue in our Basco School District right now, but we do need to know what they're going to do regarding compliance with the federal law. And the big races this year are school board. So, thank you for doing that and signing that letter.
Anybody else for public comment?
I just wanted to thank you about the Highway 17. I know you haven't received this year's reports, but I just, I know a month ago, there was two people killed on Highway 17 with a head-on crash. And the higher these taxes go, our governor just signed an increase in the BNO taxes. For those that don't understand what that means, that means they have to pay for taxes on existing structures, on existing furniture. It's just tax over tax over tax. And as far as our real estate goes, I think we really need to have an investigation on what is driving it up. It's more than just the costs. I think that there are people that are coming in and buying properties and holding them and making it so that there's renters instead of homeowners. All of that needs to be investigated because it seems like we're spending five times more than we've ever spent and we're getting 10 times less. So, just something that I'm concerned of. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
So, Commissioners, I was sent this notice and I shared this with Administrator Danzil. Hopefully, he'll share it with you, but I want him to share it with the public. On June 24th, there's a Joint Transportation Committee meeting, a hearing, I guess it's a work session. This will be the joint, both the House and the Senate, on transportation issues in our greater Tri-Cities, Quad Cities area. It's going to be held at the Three Rivers Convention Center on the 24th of June at 12:30. I would suggest that anybody interested in roads, I shared this with the young lady behind me, attend that and share their concerns. And I would encourage the commissioners to also attend and consider testifying in front of their committee if there's an opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Excellent. Yes, Mr. Mullin.
Mr. McCart, if you're willing, if you'd help me get prepared for that, I'd be happy to testify.
Good evening, Commissioners. Peter Harpster was obviously here for a different item tonight, but I did want to mention, I appreciated the presentation on the budget shortfall and speaking in my other role as a councilman across the street, I'd love to have a million and a half shortfalls. We're dealing with $10 million shortfall. And so, I wonder if Mr. Danzil, you wouldn't mind sending me those slides to bring that back to my other colleagues on council and ask some ideas to present to staff. So, appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? And thank you, Ms. McCart. Ms. McCart's on top of air. He knows everything that's going on everywhere. I tell you, I don't know how he gets it done, but he does.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that what our administrator brought to us, proposed resolution, I've been reading through it here. I'd like to ask that we bring that before the board tonight for immediate action.
We'd have to alter the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the agenda to add a potential action item.
Second.
Amendment motion to second to amend the agenda to add a potential action item. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Go ahead, Mr. Mullin.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add to the agenda Resolution 2025-155, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Washington, adopting a litigation communication plan with the Franklin County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And attached to this is an Exhibit A and it's Franklin County Litigation Communication Plan that goes down through the purpose, the guiding principles, the roles and responsibilities, communication procedure. And I would move that we put that before us for action tonight.
It is discussion. Oh, did we vote? Did we vote?
We voted to add it.
We did? We did already vote?
No, you added it to the agenda. Now, you can discuss.
Yes, yes. But did we vote to add it to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm just trying to keep track of everything right now. So, discussion.
I think it's a good idea that we have better communication with legal and I think this spells it out pretty clearly.
I agree because there's been things that have been done without us even knowing about it. And we're the clients and we got to be informed of what's transpiring on a timely basis.
Yeah, I, as I read through here, yeah, unfortunately, I think that this is necessary to go about at this place. As you stated, Mr. Chairman, we have not been informed in a timely manner and that has been to the detriment of the county, I believe. And I think it's very necessary that we do this and do it immediately and not wait for next week. So, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 2025-155 as presented.
Second.
There been a motion and a second for Resolution 2025-155. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I was hoping that we were going to get that on the agenda and pass tonight because I read through it. It's very good. Mr. Danzil, you are moving at a lightning pace. We can't hardly keep up with you. So, keep it going. So, with that, do we have any executive session?
We do under 4231101I triple I litigation.
Who and how long? Who's in the room and how long?
The board, myself, Mackenzie Lloyd.
30 minutes.
30 minutes.
And Mr. Danzil.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll move into executive session at 8:13 and we'll come out at 8:43. Are we going downstairs?
We're back from executive session with no decisions being made. We're back to regular order. Is there any other business for the good of the county?
Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to just hold for just a minute?
Yes, I would. We will pause for a few seconds here. If you're out there listening, we just came back from executive session. We're in just a pause for a few seconds. I believe the business of Franklin County has not been concluded tonight.
There were some more letters designed, wasn't there?
Oh, yeah. Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to ask to add a potential action item.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second to amend the agenda for a potential action item. All in favor say aye.
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 So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we instruct our administrator to advertise, to amend the ordinance pertaining to how Franklin County chooses to indemnify former employees or otherwise indemnify potential or litigation.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second for our county administrator to look at our ordinance and rewrite the ordinance for indemnification. Is there any further discussion?
I think this is necessary action that this board take.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business for the good of the county? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting and open our workshop. Tonight, we have a couple items on the workshop. And at this time, I will call the workshop to order and ask for approval of the workshop agenda.
Move to approve the workshop agenda.
Second?
Been a motion and a second to approve the workshop agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, public comment please only on the two items for the workshop agenda. Is there anybody for public comment? Okay, with that nobody coming forward, we'll move to the first item, Happel Center, presented by Mr. McCall, Happel manager. Sorry to keep you waiting so long, Mike.
No problem. Got a lot of important stuff going on.
Yeah, it's busy.
What do I need to do? Am I on here?
Yes, you are.
Good, thank you. First of all, good evening, gentlemen and ladies.
Good evening.
I won't be long tonight. In fact, I might be premature in terms of some of the things we need to discuss at some point.
How'd you get my car up there?
Is that yours?
I got one that looks close to that.
Actually, I just brought to you, if I could, just to share with you. We had our open house on May the first, and it was very successful. And we've got some very good leads. We've already booked some business from that evening, which is great for 25 and one for 26. And we continue to build momentum. One of the issues for us is just maybe in the last couple months, we slowed a little bit in terms of acquiring some of our smaller equipment needs and items that need to be repaired to continue to move forward. And so we can discuss that briefly. But if you would, I just want to share this, I don't know if it's a 50-second video, and it just gives you a little bit of visual from our open house. So, as you can see, the place is...
The one thing you should be doing before bed if you want to release fat faster.
I promise that was part of my presentation.
Hey, continue, I gotta watch that.
You've been watching.
Good old ads. Kinda love them.
I guess we need to chuckle at nine o'clock at night after our opening.
That's what we do.
As you can see, you know, the place has really been cleaned up. And I want to say thank you to everybody from the county that continues to chip in and do their part to help to see Happel regain itself. And, you know, I know earlier Jennifer Wagner was mentioned. I just want to give her a shout out to because every time we have something that in need arises, we're not really sure where to go. She seems to be the one to pop over and get things done, and she's always got a great attitude. So, I want to say thank you to her. And commissioners, you know, to those of you that, you know, and you know who you are contributing in ways just of your time and your effort to help us to continue to improve the place, improve the facilities. We thank you for that. And certainly to our staff because we're working hard. We're trying to raise the level of excellence there. And as you guys know, it's a process. Everything that we do in life like this is a process, doesn't happen overnight. But we are seeing progress. We're seeing, we're certainly getting great feedback from our clients that are coming and using the facility, whether it's trade shows or corporate businesses coming in. So, those are all positive things. I guess the one thing that I would like to just mention tonight is, and I think we probably need some clarity in terms of process of how to go about, you know, requesting some items that we'll need. I don't know that we've got an overall plan that we, both sides, that we know how to go about that. And I think, you know, in talking with Brian and hopefully Eric Johnson's able to be involved, I certainly think that would be a big help because he's very familiar with it and was part of helping us move the ball along several months ago. So, it's just that process of knowing, and, you know, in this time when money's tight, we need to be wise about what we're spending on. We need to make a determination of the difference between needs and wants. But we definitely have some needs. Both the ice facility, we're ready, we're ready to start, you know, implementing public skating over the summertime. We've continued, we're not taking the ice out this summer. And so, that decision was made so we have both the youth hockey, Takaha Association, and also the adult hockey skating all summer, throughout the entire summer. And but it still opens up a lot of blocks for us to do at least one night a week of public skating during the day when the kids are out of school. We'll have plenty of, you know, morning and afternoon time. So, there's some things that need to be acquired to make that happen because it hasn't been set up and structured for that in the last several years. So, we have those things ready to present, but I just, I think I'd like some help at some point to say, you know, here's the process that we need to do and have some good conversation about that. I don't, I'm not expecting that answer tonight. I'm just sharing with you that I think it's probably time for us to do that. We have, you know, so many critical projects that are on the drawing board right now. That HVAC system is really key because we have people right now trying to book this summer, and we can't book it. You know, even though we have fans, we just can't do it, and we can't risk it, and especially a couple concerts. So, we are going to put a couple concerts. We'll put one in July in the expo hall, and hopefully there could be two more because we're trying to do some concerts on boat race weekend. Think it would be a great opportunity for us to reach people, to provide them some entertainment at night and air-conditioned environment. So, we're working on that right now. So, we're, the HVAC's important. The parking lot getting repaved and striped is important. You know, right now, we're, we've just put a plan together with our security company to have a parking plan and traffic plan because these concerts that are coming up in July, there's revenue there to be made and should be made because for the last, you know, I don't know how long, a lot of the parking's been free. And the only time it hasn't been is when an outside promoter comes in from out of town, and it's been a little bit of a free-for-all. So, there just needs to be a better plan, and we're prepared to execute that. So, those projects are important, and, you know, there's just others, there's other things that the facility needs to operate and execute on a daily basis. And I don't know if you've noticed or not, but the marquee out on the highway, the LED's out, and it's 14 years old, and it is not able, Yescow was the provider and has been servicing it, Young Electric Sign Company. But they have told us that the parts no longer are available, and it cannot be fixed, the LED portion. So, we need, we need to, you know, at some point, we need to address that. And I've, you know, I've got some bids, and I've got some options, but it requires somebody on your side of the fence to be able to sit down and go through this so we can bring some solutions to the table and timeframes. And I'm sure, you know, we've got people that have ads that would be running on there, and I've got our naming rights partner that, you know, we've got some obligations to. So, we're going to have, need to address that too. So, there's several items. They're all good, they're all positive. We have, you know, we continue to get leads. We're creating more and more business opportunities for ourselves, and it's just showing me that the marketplace definitely has a need for this center for the kinds of activities. And I'm looking forward to, and by the way, we are, starting next Tuesday, doing a complete inventory of the entire place, of everything we have. We're also going to be doing an inventory of the things we've put in, we've installed in the last year, the ones that are going to be done here that we just mentioned tonight, and what the future may look like in terms of overall repair, whether that be the roof or, you know, things major down the road so that we can establish, you know, hopefully some kind of contingency plan or accrual of money for those over the years, which hasn't been done, you know, these last several years. So, it's just time to... So, it's just time to, I think, we've, you know, we've, I think, taken a rise in the last year. I think we've made some good headway, and I don't want to stop there. I don't even want to level off, I want to, I want to keep going because we're not close. And I think, you know, the usage of the facility, you know, June and July are a little slow, and there's, it's historic for that, not just this facility, but around the country. It's a slower time for conventions or companies doing corporate events. So, but that doesn't mean there aren't events we can't be putting in there, but we need to have the tools to be able to execute it. And some of these weekends, we're getting booked, there's certain prime weekends, we can hold two events there, we can use the arena, we can use the expo hall. But it's going to require certain things, dividers in the bathrooms, you know, it's just certain mechanical, executional things that we can funnel people into one facility and funnel them into the other facility. So, we're trying to also create a set of doors, not a set of doors, but awnings that will go over to the set of doors on the northwest corner of the arena so that we can use that as an entry and exit for events that we're hosting in the arena, not trying to funnel everybody through the same front doors for two events. So, a lot of good things, these are all, you know, these are all challenges that are coming to us because activity's happening, and we're being asked for it, and we need to be prepared to handle these events. And I think we're there, I think we're there. Any thoughts or questions?
Questions, commissioners? Mr. Danzel?
This all sort of came to be because Mike does a great job out there, by the way, and they've promoted it and done a good thing with it. I felt uneasy about making decisions for the entirety of the board. So, I don't know what sort of process we're talking about, but I think this is the process we need to use because I think where you get into trouble is if there's not being presented to the entire board, especially after the troubles that we've had out there. It's not because of HWL or Mike McCall, quite the contrary, they're the ones that I think are coming in and really fixing and doing a bang-up job. But I think it just needs to come before you gentlemen when there's a request for spending money or trying to tap into some of the capital funds. Because in talking with you gentlemen individually, I think that you all kind of have a different approach, you know? And so, I think that that's, fits for the fiduciaries of the county to make the fiduciary call. So, willing to work with you in any way, shape, or form, I still think it needs to come back when there's monies being spent in front of this board, based on where we've been with the Happo Center and based on being disclaimed and based on the audit findings. I think that we should just be super-duper careful about anybody operating outside of, you know, their role. And so, that's why I asked for it to be here. It's not, I think HWL does a great job, and Mike and the people out there do incredible work. So, thank you, sir.
Thanks. Yeah, so I just did want to bring up, I was prepared tonight to talk about some of the capital requests, but honestly, it's one, it's one list of things we need. But when you look at the HVAC system and you look at the parking lot, and you look at our, hopefully, our transition of getting the accounting processes in place and a little bit more on our side so we can operate with QuickBooks and know exactly where we're at on a monthly basis. We just need, we need, we need a point person to generate that and to work through that with, and I, that's all. And I'm hoping that we can continue that, not, because we've kind of slowed down the last couple of months with a lot of this stuff. And so, I'm kind of pleading with you today to reorganize your thoughts and say, how can, you know, how would you like me to do it? You know, tell me the process you'd like to see, whether it's capital, you know, capital expenses, some operating expenses that we just aren't comfortable, we don't want to commit to it and then have it go into the auditor's office and come back saying, you know, not approved. So, that's all. I think it's just time we probably define, better define how we go about this. Because it's been great, you guys, I mean, I've had nothing but support, but I can feel a little slow, both on our part and probably on yours, because there's a lot on everybody's plate. So, it's probably just time to reorganize, get our game plan, get our playbook in line, and so we can start executing and continue to grow.
Mr. Danzel?
So, like on the accounting side, have you, you got, I haven't been involved in that part, but you've kind of got a game plan with the auditor's office on where to go there?
Yes, we had a couple good, very good meetings, very positive, very constructive. And so, we constructed a document that would outline specifically with good systems in place, I hope, you know, from the auditor's office, and have provided it and have sent it over to the office, I think through Brian, went through you, Brian, first, right? And so, I believe it's in the auditor's office, in their hands, and we're ready to finalize it and execute and get that transitioned over. We've already gone back, in fact, from January 1st, and done all the expenses and revenues and have them ready to slide right into QuickBooks whenever we are ready to transition. And that will be, it will be QuickBooks on the county, you know, will be through the county. So, the county will have access to it, you know, real-time, anytime they want to look at it. It's not even, we don't have to wait for a month till the end of the month, they can look at any moment.
So, on the sign, the marquee sign?
Yes.
So, they've said that it's obsolete, so they can't repair it, so it's dead right now?
The LED portion is dead.
And so, our option is to replace it?
Yes.
And that's approximately how much-ish?
It's probably $175,000 to replace it.
That's, that's the cost of the, of the stuff and installed?
Yes, probably. I don't, I didn't get a quote for that because I got a quote six months ago, knowing that sign was going to break down. I, you know, I'd spent several years in that industry, so I could see the sign. So, I got a quote last December for, to replace it but enlarge it. And so, instead of having a fixed Happo Center, we would enlarge the LED portion so that we could communicate through video in a significant way and really be the premier sign in the tri-cities. And that quote came in at $400,000 for double-sided. So, if, but if we, so if we just replace the existing size of the LED that's in there now, my best estimate right now would probably be $175,000.
So, 175 to 400, depending?
Yes, on which way you go.
So, I know our public works director is, was going to lead the parking lot repair. Do you know where that's at, any idea?
I would have to reach back out, Mr. Erdman can do that, no problem.
Okay. And then, we're underway on the heating and air conditioning in the arena? So, that's underway?
Mr. Commissioner, the majority, I think, of where there, I don't think there is a problem. I think that there's a natural, after you get the audit findings we had and disclaimed, there's going to be a natural resistance from the auditor to change practices that loosen up on the controls. And I really, I was expecting tonight that it was going to be an ask for either $65,000 or $130,000 for an itemized list of things that HWL, that I've sent on to you gentlemen. But it hasn't always been that the board has been on the same page with that. And so, I don't know a better way than to, I think that if you're asking to spend county funds, you just got to come before the board to do it. And then, when it comes to the rest of it, I think that we're going to get back to a smarter approach to the accounting, to where it works for both sides. But it's just, I know that there, it's frustrating because you want things to happen in a quicker way, but I think we're going to get in trouble if we do. I think this is the very thing that we're, we were told, hey, no, you're not doing that right. So, it might be a little bit more deliberate, and it might be uncomfortable because you have to come here to ask for what you're wanting to ask for, but I think you guys designed it that way. I think that's what you're wanting to have happen, so.
We definitely need to do it right.
Yeah.
So, currently Happo is paying for rights to be on the sign out there?
Well, they pay $100,000 a year for the naming rights.
For the naming rights and everything?
That's a piece of it.
Are they on the sign out there?
I'm sorry?
Are, does Happo have their name on the sign?
Yeah, they do.
They do.
Not on the lit portion, it's not working, but the other portion is, yeah.
And how many more years of contract, or is that, we signed a three-year contract with them. What year are we in, number three, aren't we?
I think we're, I think we're, we signed a 10-year contract.
10 years.
We're six or seven years in.
I believe you're accurate on that.
I think that, Mr. Danzel, that maybe we should contact the Happo Credit Union and say, we'd like to see your name and lights.
Yeah, very well. I agree.
On the ice rink and some of the needs that you've identified there, do you have kind of a projected approximate?
Yes, $85,000. But that includes $30,000 of skates so that you can open up, start public skating. It needs new ballasts in there for, you know, the lights. We're already painting, we're repainting the whole place. We're doing everything that we possibly can with elbow grease right now and that, but some of these things are just pieces that need to be upgraded and replaced.
So, something for you fellow commissioners. So, Mr. McCall and Mr. Danzel and myself have been working with our clerk of the board to draft a letter of appreciation and thank you for everybody that helped back in December, did all the cleanup. And so, I'm sorry to everybody that helped, I'm a little slow on that, but we are working on it to do that, where that we could give each of them a letter of appreciation for all the, all that they done. So, what, Mr. Danzel, what do you think that that would look like? He has a $20,000 need, what would that process look like? Would he approach you and ask to be on the agenda to present a proposed ask? And so, that process would be, could be between one and three weeks long, kind of depending?
Yeah, I don't think it would be too long, it would just be the, you gentlemen, with previous administrators, you restricted what all they could do and how much money they had the approval to spend. I think that's wise, but it applies to me too. And so, I think that the best thing that we could do is, yeah, if they have an ask or a need, is to just be on the agenda, come and ask for it, and you guys vote it up or down. It's not always the most, it's not necessarily the most efficient. It'd be way easier if I could, if Mike could just call me and I go, yeah, Mike, that sounds good. I just, given the, you heard the auditor, you've seen the reports, we've got to be pretty careful with how we do this, and you really are the fiduciaries of this county and are responsible for the purse strings. I don't feel personally comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead and spend $130,000 or $400,000 on it. I mean, it just really needs to come here. So, I would just envision it like this, I get a phone call or an email from Mr. McCall or any Larry or Wes or anybody, and asking to be put on the agenda so that they can ask to spend some of the funds on X, Y, and Z. We put them on the agenda, they come in, they go, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'd like to spend X amount of money on X, Y, and Z. You gentlemen voted up or down, and we all go on our merry way. And if you wanted to, we could, if you wanted to make it something where it was semi-regular, then that's why I did this workshop, you could get them on a, on a calendar where like every couple of weeks or every month or every three weeks, you come back, and if it's nothing, it's a two-second, gentlemen, I've got nothing for you, but if you have requests, then you can actually see the board and the body that determines who, you know, how to handle that. So, that's what I would recommend.
You know, what was, when I started, I think it's almost 10 months ago, the process was to go through the county administrator, he would present it to you, and then it was just, so we had one funnel from each side, one voice to one voice. And that seemed to make sense. And so, if it's going to change, that's fine. The only thing I'd recommend is to do this every three weeks or every time we have, I mean, this should really be, this, much of this stuff is capital expense, should be approved once a year, and then, and then we access it throughout the course of the year.
Again, I, the accountants didn't agree that it was all, that it fit capital expenditures, and so, that was another one of the issues. But I, I just don't think that you want to get into a situation where you're expending hundreds of thousands of county dollars and they're not asking you gentlemen to do so. I really don't believe that that's a good thing.
No, Brian, I'm not saying that's what, what I'm saying is, what they asked us to do was to come through your position, and you present it to them, and if there's any questions, I'll certainly come to answer anything, anytime you want. But that's what we've been asked to do. And so, if there's a change that's going to go on, I'm fine, let's just discuss the change. But doing it every three weeks, guys, that's, that seems inefficient for us, and it would make much more sense to bring you on an annual basis, you know, what the needs are, what the, you know, and they're, most of these are capital expense, some of them are, and it's, and it's changing. So, the list I've already given him has already changed in the last three weeks. You know, our business moves, and you've got to move with it, right? So, so, so the, and some of them are operational, if anything's a thousand, under $1,000, we should just continue to put it in as an operational expense and just ongoing. But if it's more than $1,000, she could put on, and if it's going to be attached or used in the facility as a capital expenditure, that's, that's just our thought. We're open to any, any way you want to do it.
So, how can we go on a tour out there? I would like the three of us to go out there with Mike and take a walk around that facility. How do we do that properly?
We just need to advertise it correctly. You can do that pretty easily. We can set it up for, as long as you all agree to it with your agenda and time and schedules, that could be relatively easy.
I'd like to do that.
We did something like that, like four years ago.
Guys, that would really be good because, you know, putting something down on a list of line items and you understanding the value of, and mostly you would, but I mean, just to block it, say, this is what this is going for, this is, and you'll see. And there's, you know, there's, we need, storage is a problem in that facility. And right now, we stuff things under the arena bleachers, they're there, people can steal them, see them, push drapes back, do whatever they want. We need to put fencing, and we need to lock, we need to put fencing there and lock it up and have access to it to store things properly. And, you know, we're on that right now. We're on all those things to shape that place up and get organized and take care of things long-term. So, that would be really good.
I'd really like to see us do that. Just, he can explain to us what his needs are, and we can, you know, discuss it as we walk. And I, I like the idea of a regularly scheduled, you know, update, I like that. We, this is one example, another example is like the mental health advisory board. What good is an advisory group if you never get a report?
Right.
I had asked that they come, you know, once a month, it doesn't have to be a long report, but, but what good is an advisory group if you don't ever get any advice?
Yeah.
And, and so, I, I see this more as, more than, you know, an ask, but a, but a, you know, a constant communication of where the, the health of the facility is and kind of what the needs are, and, you know, I, I'm very familiar with Happo because I go constantly. I get, I kind of know the life of the building, the, you know, how it breathes, how it, how it acts, how it sounds, you know? And so, I think that a regular update is helpful.
Yeah.
And also, the, I know we're working towards something with the city, and they've already mentioned and asked that they really want to get their arms around, what do we have there? What do we need? You know, what do we need to accrue for the future? So, we're working on that.
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
What elevation does Larry have us flying this airplane at currently?
I don't, I don't know.
We were at 30,000 feet for so long, I was getting nosebleeds. And we got some property out there that could be moved, could solve a lot of our problems, including building up our rainy day fund. I think it's time, before the market crashes, that we maybe look into some of that land that we have out there and making our budget right. Mr. Danzel?
Yep, I would just close by saying, Mike does a great job out there. HWL has been, I think, monumental in shepherding the county through this. I would just say, you did have the county administrator playing a big role, and that's where you got your audit finding. If you remember, that was kind of the emphasis of what we were doing wrong, is that the county administrator wasn't really doing what they were supposed to. Now, I have no problem helping out, but again, I just want to, I very passionately feel that this needs to come before the board, these expenditure requests, regardless of, if you don't want to come once a month or every three weeks, pick the time, but whenever, anybody else, any other entity that utilizes county accounting and county funds, they've got to come before the board to get approval. I just don't know a real, actual legal way around it. As much of a son of a gun as that is, and that can just slow things down, I don't know a way around it.
I don't see that that's necessarily going to throw, slow things down. I just, you know, as, as you're going through a restructure of our agenda and the process, I think that it, I think that it wouldn't necessarily slow things down. I think it could be, I think it could be made efficient.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. McCall, we thank you very much.
Thanks.
Keep up the great work with what you got.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Next, we have the county benefits presented by Margot Wilder.
Good evening.
This is going to be short and sweet?
Short and sweet.
Good.
As much as I can make it. So, just backed in front of you again tonight, just to get an idea of a direction that you want me to go. I know last time you asked for kind of a comparison. Unfortunately, what the brokers presented isn't really a, like an apples-to-apples comparison. I will just mention again that you had six brokers that came before you to present different information on PEB, ICRA, WCIF, group coverage options, self-insurance level funding insurance and plan changes such as tiers or composite. It was a lot of information thrown at you in a lot of different meetings. Thank you for your cooperation and sitting through all of that. Some of the things that I will say were kind of put together for the brokers, hold on, Hold on, let me get my eyeballs on. So PEB, um, the rates are on, online. Um, it was kind of a consensus that they're a bit higher than what the Franklin County is paying for right now. So we're kind of sitting pretty good with our premiums and with Primera. Um, ICRA was pretty much across the board advised by the brokers. Could we do it? Yes, we could do it, but would it really be sustainable or, or a high recommendation for the county? And that was, no, it really isn't. It's more intended for the small businesses and contractors. So possible, but probably not really recommended. WCIF, not a whole lot on them. I will say I was presented with a news article about them. I went and kind of skimmed through it a little bit again today. It looks like there was probably, possibly some fraud with a now former employee. So little concern on that if we wanted to dive into the WCIF pool that we might consider. Um, self-funding, Hub did bring forth a feasibility plan for Franklin County to go. They very much feel that Franklin County isn't a place we could go self-funding. It would be, would you want to do that? Um, level funding, that's just a mix between what we have now, fully insured versus a self-funding. If you want to move towards self-funding, it's a way to get there a little bit more safely than um, just diving right into the deep end. The group coverage options are, it's really going to market. It's going and talking to the broker, not the brokers, but the plans and getting plan designs, things like that. Each broker can do that. So it kind of comes down to, for me at this point, number one, do we want to try to switch brokers? If we do want to try to switch brokers, we need to do an RFP. Um, talking to just McKenzie on a little bit today, we think we could possibly try to fast-track that in about a month and a half. Um, just for timeline, I would like to, and I hate to sound like a broken record because here we are at the almost end of May. August is when we go out to market or we go out to get the different premiums from the um, medical providers. So if we kind of fast-track an RFP, we're talking middle July. And that is depending, that's all the processes that we need to go through. I do not have the information for you what it would exactly look like to switch over brokers, not only for contracts, what it would take if we need a new benefit um, system. So we have Boone Chapman right now, which is what you go into every year to select your medical plans if we need to establish a new one of those. Um, we are on a tight timeline just for our own in the county when we have open enrollment because of how we pull our benefits for payroll. So we have to be done this year, uh, prior to the week of, um, sorry, the week before Thanksgiving. So we backtrack everything from there. So that's kind of where we're sitting. Um, so anyway, just whatever direction that you want to advise me to go, I'm, I'm all ears.
Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you describe fast-tracking an RFP, describe, describe what, what you mean by that.
Well, it, I know for GMP, what did it take us, a couple of months, I think? Something like that?
I would say a month and a half.
Yeah. So it's just putting the RFP together and getting it approved. We need to get it out for the brokers or varies, whoever wants to submit for it. We need to give them time to put a proposal together. Um, I, I will tell you, I gave them a month to per put, to put a presentation together for you. Um, so we would need, and that's given them only two weeks to do that. We would need to form a committee to go through the proposals. Um, depending on what you want to do as a board, whether you want to hear from the various brokers that are kind of like the semi-finalists. And then getting um, that the broker approves and getting any contractor or anything that we need to get for them, all in time for them to go out to market for us in August.
You talked about in several of the different things that you talked about, from self-funding to ICRA, you said the recommendation was, was to not go with those different things. Who's those recommendations from?
The self-funding, actually, Hub, who is our current broker, very much came out and said you could do it. I, they even sent a, um, a whole plan for it of what they um, were going to do. ICRA, the, the ones that I look back onto, they all said you could do it. It's possible. Um, it's just not really recommended for, one, I think there's only one county that I'm aware of, and it's in Idaho. Or two, for our size of, of staff who's on it. It's really more for a smaller business or contractors. But it is possible to do. It wasn't a no, but it was a.
I just wondered who's making this recommendation. They're recommending that Franklin County not do this. And I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to have an understanding.
It was the brokers. I wouldn't say any of the brokers said, don't go self-funding though.
Okay. Um, I, I think these brokers have, I mean, th- this is what they do. And as far as, I don't believe we need to have a fancy RFP. It certainly needs to be a legal RFP, but it doesn't need to be fancy. They, they, they came and gave us, you know, extensive and sometimes very um, complicated presentations. They're, I believe they're very, very aware. I think by the end of this week, we could send an RFP out. I think it needs to be one page, and it says, you put your proposal out for what you believe that you as a, that you as a, as a broker have to offer. Um, I don't know exactly how the parameters of that are, but I think that we're making this way more complicated than is necessary. And um, as somebody that works in the contracts world pretty, pretty regularly, um, I recognize that it has to be done legally and properly. Um, however, um, I think that we're now on the point where we're talking about trying to rush things again, and I don't think that that's helpful. And I think that we need to um, first decide if we're going to get a new broker, and then after that, decide a plan. And I, I think that's the track that we were on, and that's, and here we are, talking about trying to rush again.
I think the two, the question that you gentlemen would probably need to answer is, number one, do you want to switch brokers? If you want to switch.
I don't know.
What?
I don't know.
Okay. So as a board, the board needs to determine, are you happy with the service that you've gotten with your current broker? Or do you want to switch that? If you want to switch that, then I think we can act quicker on it. I, I would like, I think McKenzie has some pertinent information as to what the, I don't know what that would be.
Yeah, so an RFP has to be pretty detailed that we put out there because we need to be very detailed for what they want to get us.
So I appreciate that, but we don't have to invent that. There is hundreds and hundreds of templates for us to go on. And it's not complicated, and it doesn't have to take a long time to do.
I, I do think that it would not be able to be done by the end of the week.
Okay, so let's say not a week, but I don't think that this is the middle of July. I, I think that we need to very deliberately go through a process and say, board, here's our recommendation and here's the way to do that. If, I feel like that, that each step of the way on this thing, we're being given a whole bunch of information without, without a, a solid recommendation is here's our recommendation and here is why. And so now, now we're once more talking about trying to rush things, and I, I'm not a fan of that.
Hey, do you want to say the only reason why we're looking at a middle of July timeline is because we do want to give our brokers more than enough time to basically respond to our RFP?
So I appreciate that, but I believe our last presentation was six weeks ago. I, I, I would like to see this move.
Whatever, you just got to instruct me what you want done. I can work with whoever.
I just want to add one, one piece to this, and that is uh, this whole process has been brought about because for far too long, we've been putting almost 2.5 million into our benefits to salary or benefits to, and we're trying to put that back into place. I want to know from you, what's the best way to do that? Is it ICRA?
I personally would not do ICRA. I, realistically, there's one county across the country that does ICRA. ICRA is legal for employers of our size based off of an RS finding, IRS, excuse me, finding versus an actual written law by Congress or a case law sort of passing. So it seems very iffy still for an employer of our size. You also have to look at potential retention issues. I think you're gonna have a lot of people who are not happy that they now have to go out to the market themselves individually and go look at their own insurance and pick their own insurance.
Right.
Um, you know, you have people who get a county job because they have county insurance, they have government insurance, and they don't have to worry about it.
But our county's been abusing this for so long. We're in a very precarious situation with our budget because of it. And this is the only, one of the reasons why we can get our budget back into place is if we stop this amount of funds that are being, they've got better insurance than we got, and they're still getting our insurance money. We're paying them not to take our insurance.
My recommendation as of right now, and this is just my recommendation from the research that I've done, is change contributions, which is, we're on process to do that, and then potentially look into limiting waivers. Do we really want to allow our employees to waive from our government insurance? If we have everybody on the plan, you know, there's a bigger pool to pick from. You potentially have more premiums going in, you know, you're not necessarily.
I agree.
Being in all that stuff, so that, that would be my recommendation is to change contributions, talk about removing waivers, and then you do need to probably address your VIBA. I don't think, you know, people aren't saying not to address your VIBA. I think we need to address our VIBA and figure out how much money we're actually gonna be putting in per plan.
And, and we are under negotiations with the union groups.
We know that.
On that very topic.
And that's why I'm asking for advice is because we're hearing back from you.
Yeah. As much time as we spend on this, my own personal opinion is you either take the insurance or you don't. If you don't take the insurance, we'll give you a $300 stipend or go to your VIBA. But no more, no more insurance to, turning it into cash. That's gotta go, in my opinion. So either take the insurance or take the $300 into your VIBA and call it good. How do we get there? And how do we get there the quickest?
Mr. Danzel.
I still think, I think that the determination the board would need to make uh, would be, do you want a new broker? If you want a new broker, then we need to get the RFPs out. And then, uh, so that's kind of what I, I think Margot's looking for tonight is, do you want to move or do you shop around? If you don't want to shop around, it's real easy. You deter, you kind of like say who we're gonna go with, and then, you know, you tell them what your wishes are uh, with the VIBA contribution and so on and so forth, the waivers. If you want to shop around, then we need to let those folks compile their information, get it into us. We, you know, we still are gonna have uh, the conversations down the road about VIBA versus ICRA. And then I think McKenzie and Margot were kind of touching on this, but I think that our bargaining units will, it'll be, we won't be able to get as much 100% exactly like we wanted the first year, but I think we can get there. It just might take two years, three years.
I'm satisfied with the broker that we have for this year.
You are?
I am.
Can I, I guess.
Just trying to expedite the, the, the issue at hand and, because we just went through, what, six weeks ago, everybody made their proposals. But um, I think, you know, we should show some appreciation for the fact that they've worked with us for years. But um, let's get to where we want to go, and then if there's issues, then we look at a different broker.
I, I would say to add on to that, because they did do the proposal for a self-funding, it might be, especially with the budget season, really looking to see if that is something that could help, also help save the county money. Um, so there, there is that option. Hub also does the ICRA if that's a matter of going that direction. My one concern with that, along with any other contribution changes, is how does that affect with the bargaining units? Because if you even went that way, and I'm just thinking out loud here, you went that way, there's still a contribution factor to it, which would need to be bargained. So you're still a set amount of money, so there's, there's that factor too. So that, it does add a, a level of complication to it, but.
Well, when you run out of money, your choices get very limited.
True.
One of my biggest concerns and I, I, as I looked at all them and, and have learned a lot more about it, um, was that our current broker had all kinds of ways to save us money. And they brought that to us after we asked the market to come talk to us. That concerns me. And so I would be in favor of, of uh, I'm not sure exactly what the process looks like. I certainly do not agree that it's a long process or a complicated process um, to ask um, brokers to, to give us proposals. And um, I think it can be concise, it can be, we can lay it out in the RFP request of what, what we're asking for and, and see. I don't know, maybe our current broker is the proper one. But uh, I think that uh, instead of having an hour and a half presentation, um, when we get it, we can say, you have five minutes, seven minutes, 10 minutes? If you can't, if you can't tell me why that, you know, if I can't describe to you why that I should be the one you select in, in 10 minutes or less, then, then probably my, my plan is too complicated.
I would agree with that.
So I would, I would like to see us um, ask, ask for people to give a proposal. Um, I'd like our administrator to, to manage and, and design what that would look like. Um, I'd like it to happen all at the same meeting so that we're not, you know, spread apart by um, five weeks and, and so that we could make an informed decision and go through a very deliberative and, and, and uh, mapped-out process.
So do, do we want to narrow the, the list of candidates then? That we want to entertain this from, or do we want them all?
Is it a closed sealed bid? Or is it, uh, they can make pitches? Okay, that's good to know. So yeah, Mr. Chairman, we can, we can do exactly what you just said.
I, I'd like to see that happen. I'd like, I'd like to say that in 30 days from now, um, at our meeting, that they're going to do their presentations. I don't think that's unreasonable. They were all very, very prepared. They know their business, it's what they do every day. And I think that that's very reasonable and normal. If, if there's something that's, that's illegal or unreasonable about that, I'd like to know. But um, I, I think that we need to get it underway.
I, I have no problem with that. The one thing I would ask for a little bit of flexibility on is I hate to put things in cement and concrete. We don't know what could happen. There might be a need to push it down the road a week, so.
I understand that.
Okay, so at about a month's time, I think we could have this taken care, okay, very good.
All right. So we're gonna put it out, put an RFP out.
So we put the R. Uh, if the board would please do a motion and, and vote on it, that would be helpful for a minute.
I don't think we can do motions in the workshop.
What's that? Oh, pardon me, uh, yeah.
So we put an RFP out, then.
Yeah.
Now, next. He's gonna be bidding on the same services that we're asking for.
Yes. Yeah, so it'll be in that RFP very clear of the services that we're requesting, what we want. And then they would be putting a proposal directly in response to that RFP.
Mr. Administrator, next week, can we have this on the agenda and we can vote on it?
I don't even, uh, Mr. Council Briggs, do I need that? Or can I just get a consensus from the board tonight?
I think staff has direction.
Okay.
Well, there you go.
I, I think that, I think that the RFP is one page, very simple. And, and uh, and there's been, I untold tens of thousands of them that we can make a template thing. Certainly needs to be, be legal, but it doesn't need to be complicated.
I was kind of in, in, envisioning, I don't know, you guys can, can chime in, but the RFP responses could be in writing as well. And then maybe they could be narrowed down and um, and then they could pick who comes and presents orally, maybe not all, all the, all the responses. Maybe it could be pared down.
That, that's the, the typical process. You know, everybody submits in writing, and then generally you could set aside a committee. So I think when we did GMP, it was myself, Margot, and then Eric Johnson at the time, our interim county administrator, and we kind of picked from the list. We went through all of the, everything that was proposed to us and then said, this is probably your best candidate, and in this situation, you could advise us of how many brokers that you would like us to bring, you know? Bring us your top three.
Yeah, but can we do this?
I'd like you to be, you to lead that.
At an earlier than a month so that we got some work? Because we're into June next month.
My, my big, the, like I said, the longest portion of this is going to be allow, allowing these brokers enough time to respond. It is a lot of information to gather, so that's.
If they got three weeks, that should be enough time to present.
They're, they're not, they're not presenting any plans. It's the broker, and then we go to the market picking plans. So the, the, their, their proposals are not going to be complicated. I don't, I can't imagine.
They'll want the business. So it's not, it's not, you won't get zero bids, trust me on that. So I, I'm not worried about that. I just want to make sure that we all are on the same page so that I can give good direction. I think that we can work collaboratively and get this taken care of.
And, and do we know what type of plan we're doing?
That is, that's the choice now.
That, that's not the choice now.
Well, the choice now is.
We pick a broker first.
Okay.
And then we, then we work on the plan and how we go about it.[1771.38] And then we, then we work on the plan and how we go about it. It's two separate pieces and processes. Am I, am I improper?
No, I don't think you are improper, sir.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're at the public comment. Is there anybody for public comment on the workshop items that we just discussed?
So Commissioners, I don't want to waste any of your time and it's way past my bedtime already. So um, I do want to talk a little bit about your uh, HAPO part of the workshop. And as it pertains to the capital facilities plan, our capital improvements plan, we are woefully out of compliance in that issue. The capital facilities plan that I have, or capital improvements plan, whichever you want to call it, was incomplete by my predecessor, was not followed, you have not adopted it, you do not have documents that are outside of that. You're not supposed to be spending money in your capital facilities if it's not on your plan. You can, but you have to have proper documentation in order to spend that money. So not to want to hold things up, and I don't know what you've budgeted, but the task that um, Administrator Danzel has put forward and quite frankly, asked me to lead on the capital facilities plan, I would request that you um, give me some time to pull this together, to at least get the foundational paperwork going so that you guys are in compliance in how you're spending your capital facilities money. You know, I, I can appreciate, we don't want to hold things up at a HAPO or other things that we want to do. But I would caution you on trying to get ahead of what should be a very valid process, especially considering the finding that you had in the last audit.
Mr. Chairman.
Very well put.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Melon.
So operations and maintenance would be okay. Capital.
So, so I.
Needs to be in the plan.
I have asked for the capital facilities plan. I've managed to find the capital facilities plan. There's some other documentation related to small and attractive assets. What is defined as a capital uh, facility, the, the laws fairly, fairly straightforward. It's not exact. Uh, I know that I, in the past, have asked legal counsel to research certain items that are iffy as to whether or not they are capital expenditures or if they're maintenance. And if I remember correctly, the law on spending your capital facilities money has changed a couple of times over the last few years. There was some maintenance in operation that was allowed for a certain amount of time. I don't remember. I haven't read it for over a year, so I don't know if it's expired or not, or if it was reissued. But I, I, I would, as we work through this capital facilities plan and improvement plan, to get it pulled together so that we, and get the documentation right. I'll probably ask for a little bit of advice from, from Jeff. Uh, you know, our counsel here to, to make sure that we're, we're appropriately itemizing things that we're putting in front of you to spend out of your capital money. So that you're not improperly doing that. As someone who's had findings for spending money on maintenance, uh, you don't want to be there, especially if you've already had one. So I, I think it's worth taking the time to let us, let us get that prepared as quickly as we can. I think we can meet Administrator's, Danzel's timeline, at least to get the, the initial work done. But I, I would ask that, you know, you consider that as part of your, and again, it ties in with the HAPO, but it's not just the HAPO.
Thank you.
Let us get the process right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Words of wisdom, appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment?
I'd like this very brief. Um, with regard to the HAPO sign, um, if he's talking about a sign that you can change the information on, on a regular basis, that is a revenue stream. So possibly think about that if you're going to change the sign. As I've shared before, I used to sell um, life and health to small groups, uh, for mutual vahmha and individual. And um, I, I am going to reemphasize that the self-insured program is your best bet. Everybody pulls together, everybody's um, trying to save the money and use the money more as a stewardship. Um, and I think even your um, different groups that they're bargaining with uh, will buy into that. So if you need a bridge to that, but ICRA, you're going to have so many headaches from the employees. They have to go out to the market themselves when they don't even understand it. What is, if they don't understand the difference between co-insurance and copayments, they're going to be lost in what they're doing and it's, they're, they're just not, it's, it's going to give you a very difficult time. And I strongly advise you against it. Um, the self-insured or the, if it, if it's taking a hard time to take a battleship and turn it a different direction, the bridge to that. And I, I honestly think you should look at a different broker. Brokers um, get different, especially with what you said, um, brokers get different incentives from different insurance companies at different times. And so it's also to their advantage as well. Sometimes, I'm not saying that's the case, but I've seen that before in, in that business, so. And I was 100% commissioned. I was a good agent, so there you go. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? So at this time, we got a closed session, right? For how long, a half hour?
Half hour at most.
Okay, all right, well, at this time, yes, we're moving into closed session.
You can adjourn the meeting.
Oh.
Workshop.
I, at this time, oh, I adjourned the workshop. We're going to move into closed session for a half hour.
You're excited about it.
So excited.